Would you pledge that and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right, when I've, uh, listened to, only listened to maybe one or two of those, just a little bit, and, and, is that my voice? Is that what I look like when I'm, sitting here?
I only wish I sounded better on tape. Sometimes singing, I don't sound any better singing on, on tape or recording either, so, live or on tape, so, my singing voice.
Not special.
It's not special.
Give us a sample.
Okay, uh, next thing in the agenda is, is the approval of the minutes for our last meeting, February twenty-third. I thought everything was good.
I had no feedback.
I didn't see anything exciting.
I make a motion to approve minutes from, uh, February thirty. February twenty-third, sorry.
I'll second.
Oh, so there's a motion by Kent and a second by Chris to approve the minutes from the, last meeting, all those in favor. Thank you. Uh, next is the department report. You're the department.
I am. Uh, I think I'll have enough to say in a few minutes. I don't have any.
Dan Roy sent me his, if you want me to read it, you could read it.
Oh, yeah.
Department responded last week to a dryer fire on Main Street. Damage was contained to the dryer only. Training this month will consist of electrical safety with CMP, traffic control management, and safety in commanding the first hose line. Assistant Chief Ed Pollard and Chief Roy will be attending the main fire chiefs conference at Sandy River later this month. Chief Roy attended the National Firefighter Cancer Symposium in Miami, Florida recently and obtained a lot of good information to reduce the risk of exposure to pathogens.
He came home from Florida.
Yes, he says he's been working a lot recently, he's been busy.
Do you have a possession?
You want it?
Yeah.
It's just an email.
I, I, I think I got most of this on his weekly report. Yeah, and, uh, you're right. Guess he had a good time in Florida. I know we got a report from, was that incidents from last month? Do you have a report?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, okay. Uh, then, select board reports.
Um, I've got one. Uh, I, uh, I heard from various sources, we had quite a lot of conversation about the, the water test that, uh, the results came back from North Monmouth Fire Department.
I forwarded those to you, oh, right.
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, and those results, uh, I mean, the good news is we tested, the bad news is, um, the, uh, sample that was collected there was three times the acceptable limit for safety, uh, for PFAS. Which is not good.
Under the state guidelines, not the federal ones.
Correct. Um, it's, um, it's better than the sample that was collected by DEP, uh, up closer to North Main Street. So, you can imagine this is sort of up the hill, you know, three eighths of a mile away, quarter mile away maybe. Um, but it does give us a, start to give us an idea of uh, how far the contamination in the aquifer there goes.
And that's only, how far, how deep did they say that well was?
It's a surface well, so it might be twenty or thirty feet. Yeah, not a bedrock well.
I sent that to Dan at the water thing. I forwarded it to Dan Roy too, but he said you should post that so people don't drink it anymore at the fire station.
Yeah, I think he did right away. I would, I would also suggest that maybe there be a mention of it in the community advertiser, just so that people know that we're paying attention to this and then if, if that is, you know, if they're on well water in North Monmouth, they should be concerned.
How many times?
Three times the acceptable.
Three times. And this, you, you said that, uh, this is a state.
Yep.
Not federal.
Yeah, the federal limit is much higher than the state one. For whatever reason.
Um, and I did talk to Dan Wells as well about this and other things, and, uh, uh, it sounds like, um, Dan is working on some supplementary grant sources that might actually offset some of the funding that the town has pledged to the feasibility study for, uh, a public water source for that neighborhood. So, we might get some positive news. Uh, he's, he said he, I think he said it, had gone out to RFP, so they're waiting for a response from the engineering firms to their request.
The way that we handle that, because it's our money and just to make sure that we can account for all of it, we're actually putting out the RFP invoices will come directly to the town. So we're gonna, we'll manage the financial end of any of that, that RFP project.
Okay, anyway, that is moving forward.
For the, for the water supply.
Uh, the feasibility study for a public water supply, uh, an additional loop or a couple of loops perhaps, uh, in North Monmouth.
Yeah, wow, I can't imagine. All the people that I know in that whole area, up and down Piscatawag Road, uh, North Monmouth, all over. I know some, what kind of wells, some of them, I just dug wells and, wow, I can't imagine how it's gonna affect, uh, a lot of people, if they're gonna worry, definitely worried about it. And, uh, what happened up in Fairfield? How, how did that all, do you know how that all got started?
I think it started with farmland parcels that had been built on and when they, I think on, and then they just started realizing and kind of started spreading.
How did they find out? I mean, at the?
I think it started with what, animal, the meat from the animal testing it, yeah, because they're organic, it was an organic farm, so that they had to
prove that they were.
And they found it then, and then that led to, you know, the water testing and then that led to saying, don't eat deer whose turkeys that you're harvesting from this area and, and all of that, but I was just looking back, I didn't see that the PFAS test results, though. I saw the initial one, but I didn't, yeah, I, so the second test.
That's why, when he brought it up, I said, I said it to Dan Wells, I sent it to Dan Roy right away and then I forgot, so I'll send it to you.
I didn't see, yeah, that one, that would be helpful to happen. So, and I just had two things. Um, I wanted to ask you, the, the sign that no longer blinks, the twenty-five sign that no longer blinks, right at the, uh,
Main Street by the town office?
Yeah.
Somebody mentioned to me, citizen mentioned to me, a month ago, they thought that the solar panels bumped in the wrong direction.
Well, it was pointing towards the trees, I believe, so it's not pointing, you know, it's not oriented south, I don't believe, but it doesn't blink and it hasn't blinked for months and Chief, uh, Ferland and I have talked about my hopes and wishes for those, but, um, at least if we could get it to blink, it would be nice.
Yep, now that Sol Ventures decided, plus we gotta, somebody up there, plus we have to get in to, to see what's going on.
And, and the second thing, you sent out that information about the bridges coming up. So I, immediately after you sent that to me, I, in the mail, I got something from DOT because my property, I own the property that
there next to.
That it abuts, that that culvert goes through right at the pump house, so I had to fill out their paperwork anyway, and so every grape I made to you about the issues with that area, I made to them, their piece of paper.
I combined both of your responses and sent it to them, they were appreciative.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I forgot all about doing that.
Yeah.
I did do something on, uh, what we got, about the, the, uh, worms.
Oh, yeah, about the brown-tailed moth.
Yeah, the brown-tailed moth stuff. It, it was a questionnaire and I, I, I felt I did it and then sent it. And I don't know who, exactly what was going on, it might have been a legislative thing.
Um, I actually, back to the bridge question, uh, I brought that topic up at, uh, with regard to the Logan Bridge project that's, you know, slated for twenty-three, twenty-four or whatever. Um, I brought it up at the, uh, NMS Cook Lake Association meeting that I attended a couple of, a couple of nights ago. Sounds like, uh, whenever it is that we're, um, gonna have a public hearing on the bridge design that they would like to participate in terms of giving some feedback about design elements for the bridge. Because they, they do, uh, you had mentioned this at our last meeting, they do have some concerns about allowing, uh, motorized boat traffic to the water in that area, trailered boat traffic. They've got no concern about, uh, I mean, as long as there's no invasive mill foil in that area, I think they'd be fine with canoes and kayaks and people using it for snowmobiling and, and that kind of stuff, but when you get into people trying to back a trailer at a ninety-degree turn right in front of the bridge, they were like, mm, no, no.
It's not a good spot.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So many accidents there.
So, uh, so if there's a, the possibility of, of putting guardrails up that people could step over with their canoe or kayak, but not really be able to reach the water with a trailer, I think that would be ideal.
Or just those pass-through areas that would allow a person to, you know, walk and carry something that you couldn't get.
Something, maybe, 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 maybe we could get some bottlers like they have at Walmart.
Yes, exactly.
So you can get your snowmobile through, but it won't let your car.
Yeah, oh goodness, that's good, all back then.
Did you put wallet installation in your budget? Put them all up now, it's like a big adjustment.
Okay, uh, that's all.
I apologize for being late.
Okay. Okay, on, onto, uh, public comment.
Nobody up there.
Favorite, we got anybody to raise hands?
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm just telling you that.
I know.
In the audience, but nobody.
Check the tempers.
No, there's nobody.
Nobody, Dave?
Uh, I just wanted to get around, uh, about six or seven years ago, we applied for a grant for a crossing light, blinking light, push button in front of, uh, Compton Hall. Is that project now on hold waiting for sidewalks or is it ever gonna get installed or what's the status of that? It's sitting upstairs at, at Highway, I, I would assume that's what everybody has told me, that it's sitting there just waiting to be installed. I don't know, I, I thought maybe it was because of sidewalks, I just, just bring me up to date, you know, what's going on?
It was there, um, waiting on the sidewalks. I don't understand the history of how we acquired it. Uh, we were contacted by DOT uh, that wanted them to use for another project in another town. I was okayed by the town manager, uh, at the time, uh, went up to, uh, give them, to them, and was told that once we got our sidewalk project to that point that they would provide, uh, two new ones. So they were released to back DOT.
Wow, because they were assigned for that crossing only, should we try to use them at the school? And we got information back that no, you could not use them, they were for Main Street at Compton Hall only.
You couldn't use them up here?
Couldn't use them up here, it was for Main Street, Compton Hall only during that whole project. I, I checked DOT three, four times, I had the contractor check, I had the engineer check, got the same answer, so I don't know how it could get, get released, but if it's gonna be in conjunction with the sidewalk project, I'm okay with it, it's just that it's been six to seven years for that.
Yes. They were covered in an awful lot of dust. I can tell you that.
I can imagine.
So how does this work? This is the first I'm hearing about, how, what's the system?
For, for crossing walks, crosswalks, and they were issued, and yes, we got one from DOT or the state for that crossing, and the grant, and the grant went through and we got it for nothing.
It's like a blinking sign.
It's a push button and a blinking sign, cross, don't cross.
Well, it would have been ripped out once we do the sidewalks through there anyway, so it's kind of a blessing in disguise.
But not six years ago.
Well, but, but the day that somebody uses a crosswalk is the day that I will.
I agree, but I was part of the writing, getting the grant for it, and I just wanna know where it might.
Especially from Toad Hall to Compton Hall, there, there's a painted crosswalk that nobody ever uses.
Right.
So.
I suspect there'll be a lot of that conversation when they redo it, because they'll, they're gonna make it all ADA compatible, you'll have those little bumpy things and at the crossings and we could make that part of our project at the time, it'll just be, it'll be a choice.
And you know why it couldn't be used up here?
Because the grant was issued on paper for that crosswalk, could not be used for anyplace else.
And there were two of them, or?
There were two.
One on either.
There's one on either side, it's one crossing, there are two, two signs.
Two, oh, oh.
A flashing sign.
Two, two.
So they face travel direction, so that when the pedestrian pushes the button, the, the cars see the flashing lights and alert stuff.
Maybe.
Kind of like those street signs.
That's, I already asked him that, like, you missed that, we'd already had the discussion about non-blinking, blinking sign.
Oh, believe me, Ed is hitting me up at coffee shop over there.
Thank you.
Oh, did you have anything, Paul, what you want to say about, uh, anything?
Uh, let's see, I think I forwarded everybody the latest on the updates for February.
Yes.
The only other thing I had other than that was, um, I don't know if this is something you wanted to put in your little blurb, but just to let everybody know that we do do, if you're away on vacation or whatever and you want your house checked, that we do provide that service for the community, knows the forms that have to be filled out.
Oh, that's great.
Um, they just come to the police department, fill them out, sign them, and then when they return, they come back in and rescind them and so while they're gone, we put eyes on their residence form, that's all.
Yeah, that's great. I'll, I'll mention it in my, uh, report. Thank you.
Oh, I saw, um, in response to Doug's, uh, uh, summary of our last meeting, I guess some of it went on Facebook.
On Facebook.
And there was a request from, uh, I've forgotten, a resident, uh, uh, regarding the audit and the results of the audit and the changes as, as, uh, you know, all of that, if there could be some sort of summary that people could see.
Yeah, and when we receive the audit that, from the state, you'll all be apprised of that because there are deficiencies there that have to be addressed.
Okay, anyway.
That's where we're at, we're still, I'm still giving them information, they're giving me feedback, and so it's still back and forth, but the art is not complete.
Yeah, yeah, no hurry, I think this was just, uh, someone wanted to know.
Yeah.
My, I thought that maybe it was, uh, involved confidential information, uh, so that, uh, you wouldn't be able to, uh.
There, there's some stuff that, that is, um, but it's information that can be released to you guys, but most of it is public information.
Okay, so I'll mention that. Uh, the other thing I, I, I heard mostly about in my, that select board notes that I put in the advertiser, and I put it on Facebook and a couple places, three places, uh, was, it was about the, uh, the moths, the caterpillar. People wondering what we're gonna use and how far along in the could we do it right away, it's our thing, you know?
Yeah, you wanna buy us a drone, we can take you.
Okay, uh, so that's it for public comment. Now, the next thing is to consider the possible, uh, consider possible articles to be included on the annual town warrant.
No, I'm not necessarily looking for a vote tonight, because you're gonna vote on the total warrant. This is just me, uh, looking for the ones that you want me to, uh, draft, so if you can just kind of give me a hint about whether you want me to bother to draft these, these, these are the ones I know about, if you have any, any others that you wanna do, I think, I think most of these, you're all, you're all familiar with, um, so the salt shed, is that, is that something that you wanna pursue? I, I got a proposal from Diego Engineering for the engineering and all that work that needs to be done today, so I have, I have a ballpark.
Okay, good. I have a question about the salt shed. Uh, I, I do think you, we should draft something. Um, you'd mentioned that the size of the salt shed might be uh, somewhat less if we ended up changing our approach to salt, uh, going from salt and sand to just salt or pre, pre-treating the road.
Yeah.
Uh, how does that affect your?
So, um, I, for your next meeting, I have Peter Coughlin from the local road center, our regional transportation superintendent for this area is coming, those two are coming from DOT, and Bill McGonald is gonna be here too. So you can kind of hear both sides and you can ask them questions about what they think, and I think they can, uh, probably better inform us all about, you know, what that looks like.
Okay, and then, and then we can make a decision on the scope.
Yeah, basically, basically deciding, um, whatever we decide to do in that area, I would just pass that along to the engineer and he'd be able to calculate what we need for size based on those types of changes, obviously with Dan's input too, about how much sand we still would need for the, for the for the dirt roads and some other places, you know, parking lots, whatever. Yeah, okay.
And we had pretty much come down on the side of a complete stick build as opposed to a.
I'm not sure if, if, if if that was the case, but, um.
I'll, I'll be curious to see what the quote is. Uh, the original quote I got early this year to, to start this process was, uh, for a, uh, canvas type structure. I went and visited a couple different structures and got a quote on that, I'll be curious to see what the quote is on a like, some laminated arch or stick built, building, see how they compare.
Yeah.
That can play a lot in the decision.
Exactly, there's been a couple, uh, towns recently that they're, they've already gone through this budget thing because their town needs are earlier, and a couple of them, you know, the, um, canvas shelters were more expensive, and reading the articles about those, because that's one thing that I read through what other towns are doing and seeing and feeling, and, uh, they were seeing, I think both of them, and I read, you know, their.
Yeah, the initial quote I got on the canvas type structure was much less than the original estimate from a few years ago or many years ago. Uh, but obviously building practices change on a regular basis, so I'll be very curious to see what, uh, what they've come up with and how they compare out.
Like two by fours, two by four by eights or ten dollars right now?
Yeah, I believe that's a laminated arch type building. Diego wrote a quote on.
Yes, originally, yep.
You know, stick built, so, it's crazy right now.
Everything.
The fluctuations, so.
What's the next one? Um, the solar panel installation at the transfer station. In that regard, I told Tim that I would read this. He, he opposes this proposal right now because if we're going to, uh, buy our streetlights, that it changes what was presented, he said especially from the, uh, SunDog Solar, uh, that, that it would change the proposal, and he didn't think that it was fair to put that out to the voters if they didn't know what the full impact would be on the things, so I didn't read that.
Sure, well, I appreciate his concern. Um, I would imagine that because of the volatility of the electricity market these days, that any proposal that was made last year is probably invalid and that we would have to re-RFP, uh, in order to get, you know, an accurate and fair assessment of exactly how this would work. And so, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm of the mind that if we were to draft a question that we would be simply asking for permission from the voters to create a, uh, to, to form a lease agreement that is not specific to any particular vendor, but instead just says we would like permission from the voters to lease, uh, you know, space at the transfer station for the purpose of creating a solar, uh, array that would reduce the town's electric bill approximately fifteen percent. I think, I think both proposals that we've seen in the past is a fifteen percent.
Yeah, that's what I read.
Yeah, so, um.
Can we do that? Can we, could, could, we can do that, it just would have to be, we'd have to have some guesstimate of what the appropriation would be for the payments in that year, because we have to have, we have to raise something so that we could make the payments in that year.
We're paying them, they're paying us.
Oh, that's right, yeah, you're right.
There's appropriation attached to it.
Problem, I mean, this was the issue.
I automatically go to that, we need to appropriate.
And, and you know, there may be some incidental costs, uh, for site preparation, like some trees might need to be cut to make room for the complete, you know, set of panels or whatever. Um, so I mean, if we said, you know, something that doesn't exceed ten thousand dollars.
But we don't pay for that.
We could just wrap it into the price?
We, we don't know, they pay for all that, they wrap it into the, to the, right, to the, whatever we're gonna pay for them for electricity. Alright, so they're leasing the, the land, we're paying them for electricity instead of paying CMP.
Right.
So there's no appropriation, that's not, it's, it's in our electric bill.
Right, so then maybe appropriation is, is if you wanna start putting away money in a reserve fund for the buyout after the six-year period.
Right.
Correct, so whatever that would be, which we could figure out at, at some point, we could base it on, uh, somewhat similar to what they proposed last time.
And I think, if I remember right, part of, uh, the savings that we're anticipating generating would come from buying the street lighting from CMP. So I'd recommend that we have that as a separate warrant item, because that does require appropriation, we'd have to pay the upfront cost to buy the streetlights, and then we, then we'd recognize this. So we'd have to have in that question what we anticipate the savings would be from, long-term, from, uh, from doing that, so, I, I don't we don't have to tie the two together, because they're two sep, you know, two separate things, but.
It's on my list, it's, it's number six.
Okay.
Those streetlights.
So then, uh, so then the solar proposal would be at no cost to the town, and we're simply looking for permission from the voters to, to create a lease agreement with the vendor to install a solar panels that would offset approximately fifteen percent of our electricity cost.
Right, because we can't just, we can't lease or dispose of public property without the public saying yes.
Right, anything more than a year, you need the town people to say, yes or no.
So how does that affect what you read that Tim wanted?
He just, um, it's concerned with the proposals we already have, don't take into account us buying the streetlights, so that he wouldn't be in favor if we were just gonna move forward with one of those proposals, I think is what he was saying.
So if we just worded as a lease agreement, then?
We could do another RFP, maybe, to incorporate that change, I suppose.
Yeah, if, if the voters approve the streetlights, then we take that out of the mix and we say, this is our new scope.
Okay, so we'll, I'll get something for that. Um, like I said, in three year, I got, uh, the department heads together, uh, yesterday, and we came up with, with a proposed scope of projects that we'll bring to you to, um, for you to pick and choose, um, to spend uh, the remaining of the ARPA funds. MMA doesn't like the open-endedness of those, of those types of questions with the final rule, they really want, uh, they really want dollar amounts and projects that attach that so that the townspeople know what you're. They really want dollar amounts and projects that attach that so that the townspeople know what you're actually saying you're gonna spend that money on. So I'll bring a list and if you have any other changes up or down, I'll just give you uh some à la carte options for you to pick from. Based on items that I know that we already need in our capital plan that we were gonna pay for anyway. It may just be a way to shift that off the taxpayers. Into the grant, now that it's more flexible. The Packer Gilman bond, there's there's like twenty six thousand dollars left in the bond proceeds. So I would suggest that we appropriate uh that money so that we can reduce next year's bond payment with those proceeds. We can't pay off uh main bond bank loans early, so it doesn't matter early what we do with it. So it makes sense. We could reduce next year's payment, but at twenty six thousand, that would hit the taxpayers. So it's just a it's just a way to use that money or something.
Right, so we can't use it for anything else.
No, you can't. This last one here, I'm not sure how familiar you all are with reserve funds. I don't I don't wanna talk at you if you're if you're all very familiar with it, but if you want me to explain. Those I'm I'm happy to, but um, for example, the way that paving has traditionally been put. Into the operating budget, it it requires us to do carry forwards at the end of the year. So we have to go back to town meeting. We have to ask them to carry that money forward into the into the following year. If we set up reserve funds. What what we essentially do is we go to the town and we say, do you approve us setting up a reserve fund for the purpose of paving roads in the town amendment? They say yes, then we appropriate money into those reserve funds. So you you'd appropriate that two hundred thousand. If the bids came in that next year and it was only a hundred fifty thousand, then the fifty thousand stays there. And you don't have to go back to the voters to spend it again. As long as you spend it for the purpose in which town meeting authorized, the select, the select board can then. Is the only one that can take money out of there. I wouldn't be allowed to and neither would Dan without coming back to you for folk, but you don't have to go back to the taxpayers. Or the townspeople for that.
We we routinely have done that for capital expenditures that we anticipated would happen in the future. It's a reserve accounts, it's no different.
Yeah, okay. I know that the, there are several accounts that have been treated as as operating expense accounts that keep having carry forwards like the Whittier Woods. Uh, harvesting fund, that would be a good one to be a reserve fund because you've always used to harvest money to do things over there. If we just set it there, we wouldn't have to worry about. Keeping track of carrying it forward every year. For the purpose of reserve funds, they really should be set up at the bank as separate individual accounts. You set up reserve funds at the bank and they sit there and we make expenditures. We actually contact the bank and we ask them to make transfers into the general fund. For the amount of the bill that we spent. So we keep it completely separated from our general books. So you you'd end up getting this sort of report every year. That would show what the balances were and how much interest was earned in each of those reserve accounts that are that are set up. So there's a couple of those. I would, I would suggest we do it for paving. We could do it for the Whittier Woods Fund and did I have another one in here? I think those are just the two right now. Um, but you could do them for other things. You could set up reserve funds uh for police and fire. In the future, just for example, if there was a police reserve fund account that had enough money in it, when we got into a car accident, you would be able to authorize that money out. To pay that right off without having to wait for town meeting to. So if you're okay with that, I can draft some examples of of the accounts that I think would be good to set up that way. I can choose whether you wanna bring it forward.
I can tell you that it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when.
Um, and then the last one was the municipal ownership of the streetlights. We are currently with the LED spending about ten thousand dollars a year. Um, nine thousand of that cost is is the leasing cost to CMP for the for the fixtures. So, um. Those are all the ones I had on here. If you if you.
And refresh me, refresh my memory and and for the public about. The cost of buying CMP out is is what?
Fifty eight thousand. So take about six and a half years to.
Six and a half year period.
Well, that's just, all that is is just the six and a half years based on the the lease cost. So that wouldn't take into account what we would save if the solar project got approved and we were saving on the electricity rate that we power those with. So there's a there's a potential for a a shorter return on investment if that all happens.
When we. Uh, I don't know who was here. Well, Kurt was here and we were talking about this and uh. And doing this, uh, the idea, I think the reason that we chose to to have CMP on them. Because it was so that they would take care of everything. They wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to bother with hiring somebody to.
And and with the old uh uh style of light that that really kind of made sense, but the LEDs last a lot longer. There are a lot less maintenance involved with them. And so, um, you know, if you have to hire a contractor to every now and then. Change a light, then, you know, I I don't see it as the as big an issue as it was back then.
We had a number somewhere that my memory serves me that that you contract with somebody for maintenance and that.
Yes, it's a list of vendors that are approved by CMP to touch them and um. They have different arrangements. Some of them have like a standard fee scope. Some of them it's just you call them out and they charge you two hundred fifty dollars an hour or whatever it is. But the LEDs, they're saying some of them we may not have to change for ten years because they just they last a long time.
If memory serves, I think Linda checked in with a couple of other municipalities who've done the buyout. Found that there was very little maintenance cost.
So, um, I I I know a concern that I heard from somebody was that they didn't produce enough heat. Uh, so that when the uh, when they, if they iced out. I don't know what would happen to them, so they wouldn't operate or whatever.
I don't think that's a problem with headlights that are directly, you know, the the. The ice or the snow actually comes in contact with them and and they'll ice up and not melt the ice off because it's not enough heat. But the streetlights are are really protected from most of that. So I don't, I have never heard that as an issue. It is definitely an issue with headlights.
You can check with the school department, see, because all those parking lot lights are the same as the LED streetlights. See if they're having trouble with snow sitting on the sensor.
Right, we could, yeah, that's definitely a good idea, but they also, they're not flat.
Right.
Yeah, so it tends to fall off them anyway, unless it's like an ice storm and that doesn't matter what how hot the bulb is.
All the streetlights that are out there now are already L P D. Right, we're not, we're not changing them out. They already exist. We're just buying what's already there.
Uh, one other thing, was the harbor master?
Yeah, I couldn't go. They meet on Fridays and last Friday I couldn't, I couldn't attend. I read, I I reached out uh to Jeff today on another issue. And I have a phone call with him tomorrow morning. So I'll I'll ask him what, what went on and do you know anymore about it?
No.
Okay, I'll I'll ask him tomorrow morning.
Um, do you know anything?
A little bit.
Secondhand. So this is, Harold, I don't know if you know the whole story on this. A group of towns in in this area are looking to collaborate. To uh fund a harbor master. Um, by making, you know, uh, four different towns making like fifteen thousand dollar contribution. And this person would uh would travel the lakes, um, especially important in Cabessy where. They're having some difficulty with uh with invasive plants and they're looking for some better enforcement in terms of. Uh, making sure that uh folks are being reasonable on the water. It's a busy lake. There are four different towns that that border on Cabessy. If one town or two towns had a harbor master and. Someone decided, you know, another town decided not to participate, it would be a big drag on the effectiveness of the harbor master. So. The essential idea here is, I think, Winthrop, Manchester, Reedfield.
Field.
And Litchfield and Monmouth have been invited.
I think that's correct.
I I read the proposal and.
Yeah.
I I have experience with a couple of lakes that had harbor masters on them. None of it was good. And none of the locals that I've talked to thought it was good. Uh, but lake associations really love it because some of them are really. Um, uh, wanna have their lake done their way and and um, not saying that it might be some. Might not be some legitimate concerns, but some of the things that they were talking about this person policing to me were more in line with. Uh, shoreline zoning type stuff and and uh water marking and then, you know, some of the stuff that uh. Uh, uh, you know, you you'd either a warden would take care of or you'd report to the warden service and they'd go. They'd have a trained enforcement person go out and and address the issue. I mean, they were talking about. Mooring buoys for boats within a certain area of the shoreline and and I have seen where that is just nitpicky. Uh, one particular person or group doesn't like the other particular person or group, so they're filing constant complaints and. So I I am completely against this idea just because I don't think it serves a real viable n- need that we. That I see right now. I just don't see the need. I see it as being more of a bone contention really and. Uh, like I said, I this one particular lake uh towards the coast where they had a harbor master, he was the Barney Fife of of the water. I saw him almost get his butt handed to him one day by a local at the ramp. And I thought we were gonna have to call a deputy to come down and, you know, save him. Um, I'm not saying that, but he wasn't trained. And so my my, another real concern I have with this, are you going to hire uh uh someone who's got some basic training in law enforcement? They can't enforce laws unless they have some basic training in law enforcement and they have the authority to do it. So I. I just see some real issues with this from my perspective. Um, I I think there are a lot more work, maybe some some narrowing of the scope of responsibility. Would need to be undertaken before I could, for I personally could support this.
The the, just a question here, the fifteen thousand personnel cost?
Well, I don't know. I I assume also costs, it's a takes in equipment cost.
Yeah, there's gonna be a a equipment fiscal note attached to that somewhere.
There there was, my understanding uh um from my brief conversation with Jeff was that the fifteen thousand per town was based on the original four. So like if we got in and or Litchfield, who are not part of the the original group got in, that would that would further go down. The plan originally was that the towns would supply their own boats, but as they've kind of expanded, they've kind of. You know, uh, Reedfield, I think, has one and and Winthrop has one already, so they weren't. As concerned about it, but I know some of the other towns were like, well, could we borrow it or could we use it? It hasn't all been flushed out.
Gonna have to set up a a kind of quasi governmental entity because who's gonna assume liability on that?
The employee is going to be a town of Winthrop employee that will be basically contracted out, is my understanding, to to the other communities as a as a municipal. Sharing agreement.
Because if someone has to have ownership of that.
Yeah.
Who's idea was this, you know?
I think it's Winthrop. Winthrop was having its own discussions, I think, about the moorings at the end of the lake down there and and how they just keep expanding. And they have no control over whose they are or how many are are getting put in. I think they're getting worried about that and then somehow conversations happened about the mill foil and. In Cabessy and how people are completely disregarding like the no boating zone and people are getting worried about that. So then these other towns just kind of all started talking. Like, well, how could we attack these these problems?
It's it's, it's not a problem. I think we have really in Monmouth and and I think if Winthrop wants to handle the problem, they should fund their way to handle their part of the. Problem would be my thought on it, but I I don't see anything but problems with it on on all kinds of different fronts. The the training of the person, qualifications, the certifications, if any, the the responsibility for liability if they. Take some kind of action that isn't supposed to be taken and it results in somebody, them or somebody else getting hurt. It's a. I mean, to me, if you're gonna enforce laws, you need to be a law enforcement person. And uh, if you're gonna enforce uh. Code violations, you need to be a code person. You, you know. I'm harbor master or I didn't had for training. Well, I haven't really had any training. Okay. I I just, like I said, not saying that I would never support it. I'm just saying that the way I see it right now, it's not narrowly defined enough. And there isn't enough in there that says how they're gonna address those type of concerns that I just raised and that Paul just raised.
Are there state laws or regulations involving like moorings?
Yeah, yeah, again, shoreline zoning.
The shoreline zoning ordinance.
That involves morning?
I did it. Fifty feet. Property lines go out into the water.
And and from a navigation safety point of view, you've only got fifty feet. That's what that's supposed to do is protect the navigable waterway because you you're not, you're you're in any. Public waterway, you're not allowed to exceed headway speed within two hundred feet of any shoreline. Um, so. This is, that regulation is designed to keep any moored craft from being out where you can exceed headway speed only.
Uh, so how does Winthrop control?
I don't know how Winthrop shoreline zoning works, but I know how it works here.
I can more. Public area, Doug, you know, you know, down at the end of the lake, near the beach, it's that area in there. There there is no, there's no private, yeah, it's like, it's the road. So it's like a public way and people just kind of, uh, over time have just kind of expanded and there's nothing, you you know, no, it's just kind of a mess.
Well, they, but there is.
At Marana Cook, is that what they're talking about?
But there is a remedy to that because it's a navigable waterway and it's not, doesn't come off of a privately owned. Uh, uh, property, they can already prohibit moorings.
Wooden services, what they'll do.
Yeah, that's that's exactly. Uh, uh, the warden service or depending on where it's located, the uh, um, Department of Conservation could even be involved in it.
Well, I can tell you, the times that. I've been aware that the Warden Service has been contacted over these sort of nuisance things. I mean, this is not life or death. This is just sort of a dispute between, you know, two people.
Call or for code enforcement calls or policeman calls.
Right.
They come out or not.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Because they always came for me, always.
Right, that that's right. They don't wanna get in the in the neighbor against neighbor and your mooring is too close to my property line or it's. You know, it's fifty one feet from shore instead of fifty feet from shore. I don't like the color of your boat or what? No, they don't wanna get involved in that. But like Dave said, Dave calls them, Paul calls them, one of the officers calls them, said, we got a problem here. They will come.
I I know at the uh north end of Wilson, the Wayne end, there's a problem by that that bridge that. People are doing the same thing there as they're doing it ahead of Marana Cook because they're just mooring their boats out there and right in front of the launch. Yeah. Creating a problem. Right. So I know, like, and and I know that uh it's cutting that goes on on Wilson that is illegal and.
Harbor Master's not gonna address that. That's a, that's a cold violation.
But he wouldn't, he would see it and he could report it, I guess.
But but anybody on the lake shore can, a- anybody that owns property, anybody that's navigating the waterways can also report it. I just. My personal opinion, this is just, it's it's a solution looking for problems that there are other solutions to.
At my previous job, it was fun because they were lobstermen. And if you put it where they didn't want it, they just cut it off. They took the town channel markers and one of them didn't like where they put it, so they they literally hooked it onto his boat and dragged it out to deep sea. And it was the town. I mean, it's like they don't, they do it.
Shotguns and seals and people.
I just, I just think, you know, we're, I heard a a. A highly placed oil company executive uh the other day who was being interviewed that said that, you know. There was a possibility that if things don't change, the gas prices could be up to twelve dollars a gallon by July. So I can't see asking the voters to spend any amount of money on a harbor master. I just can't.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't have any, does anybody else have any that they wanna consider, uh, uh, other than all the normal ones that are right on there?
I don't, no, I guess.
I think we got it.
Uh, next is the budget review for public works, the transfer station. Next is the budget review for public works, the transfer station.
Wanna do the public's public works budget first?
How we've been doing it is that there's really no change or anything. You just, you know, you don't have to explain every line item, but if there's a change or something, that's what they've been wanting to hear.
Do you make copies of each for the board or not? But I gave you the explanations I typed up. See one from here, but.
This is capital.
Oh, one oh six overtime on the public works. Uh you'll see that I'm overspent this year and will continue to overspend. Uh but I I left it at twenty thousand because uh this winter has been a little extreme. Optimistic the next year we do not so extreme. So I don't wanna raise that line because I. We had ten storms between Thanksgiving and New Year's.
What line are you looking at?
My first line, oh, one oh six.
Oh, oh, one oh six, okay.
Use the number. Salaries and wages full time uh. I believe there was a cola figured in, a preliminary cola. Yeah, there is a jump on the wages full time. I think Justin can explain that better than me.
Sure.
From the previous.
So when Keith Pete was public works director, his position was backfilled. And then when and then when he demoted back down, um the decision was made not to lay off that person. So we've actually gained a body in the public works department. So that's why there's a big jump. Um from the one ninety six to sixty eight because we now have seven, right, Dan, now? Instead of what was six before, I think.
Yes, yes.
So that's what that is. It's not, it's not that any individual got a big increase or anything, but.
And a much, a much needed body that fills um every available plow truck or sandy truck during a storm. Um which allows us to get the roots done more efficiently and a little bit quicker. We're still at. Um four hours on a couple of the bigger routes for one trip through every road they have, which is. Can be tough uh depending on the amount of snow precipitation falling um. So even though that's an increase, it's it's a much needed body. Um if not, I think we'd be. Closing in on four and a half to five hours on a one trip around on a route, which would really uh could really impact the roads and responses.
And that also allows you if somebody's sick or hurt or out that you you can still cover everything. It's gonna take four and a half hours instead of four, but you still get it covered.
Correct. Yes, it's it it. Uh in the early part of the season, when we had all those storms, we also had two people out with COVID. And it it kept us by calling in one of the research, I'll call it a reserve person. Um it kept us. At a at a tolerable functioning level instead of being completely uh behind the eight ball. The next big one that's uh is oh, two, one, seven, equipment rental. Uh there's actually a deduction there of about seven thousand dollars. Uh we now own the excavator, an excavator, uh so we don't have to rent one on a yearly basis. So we still will need to rent some equipment. Um but that's the why there's the large drop of that line. Is that we have the excavator available to us twenty four seven. Uh oh, two, two, six mileage. Uh I dropped that from eight hundred uh down to five hundred. Uh you can see expenditures for the last two years were were um lower. Uh that's mostly due to having the uh. Personal vehicle, the Jeep, available to public works and that's actually available to any town employee. Um it just happens to reside in my parking lot. And uh so I dropped that line down just to reflect the actual cost.
Oh, real other major variances that I see.
There isn't um. Uh I I on oh, two, five, nine, um it's telephone, which is also my my modem, my internet. Uh I put an increase there uh with the anticipation that I would be uh getting a new modem, which I have now is. Ancient, but it's works. It's working fine even with my new computer. Uh and there's been some talk on the town level. Potential changes, so I I just, if if there isn't any, I was gonna increase it and that's mostly just to be able to monitor the uh. Outside gas pumps more effectively, be able to download quicker. Um. One, the biggest reason for the increase is that it, the old grandfather contract we have provides free cable and the internet service that. Let's call it sixty nine ninety nine a month. Once you switch to the new modem, that's much faster and. Things seem quicker, you lose your grandfather contract. So you were paying a higher internet rate and you don't have any cable free. So in order to have even just the basic channels to watch the news, the radar, you know, whatever, you'd have to pay for the cable. So that's what the slight increase would be on that. Reason why. I let's see. The general supplies line, oh, three, one, three, that sees quite an increase, but it uh there's a comment, if you look down a little further under oh, three, one, eight hardware. And oh, three, three, four minor equipment, those two lines were combined into general supplies line. So that's why that. Just gain an increase. That's just. Basically, recommendation from from Lori and Justin for housekeeping and easier to keep track of, which I certainly agree with. Uh I increased the oh, three, three, five mulch. I increased that to twenty five hundred. I just anticipate. The cost for that material is gonna go up. Um every, you know, my grass seed that I had to purchase went up, everything went up with that. So I just. Office supplies is good. And then the big one um is roads improvements, road resurfacing. I requesting six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I couldn't support that at all.
The reason is, my reasoning is, is. Looking through history, basically in twenty eighteen, the road maintenance program in this town went awry, went off the rails. There was no roads paved in twenty eighteen at all due to a few circumstances that I've. Found begins through talking to people, getting some information, finding some paperwork. When road resurfacing continued in twenty nineteen, the roads that were not done in twenty eighteen, not all of them were carried forward and dealt with in twenty nineteen. Other roads were done in their place. Uh twenty twenty saw only the Packard and Gilman roads. Um transformed from gravel to tar, which is amazing, thankfully, uh but no other roads were surfaced or dealt with. And uh.
Wait, we appropriated paving money and there was roads paved.
Yeah, there was twenty, twenty nineteen.
Twenty twenty, we pro, we had a paving budget. We spent money paving, right? No, those are bonds. Those were bonds. They were wholly separate from the paving appropriation.
Okay.
With Packard Gilman, yes, those were all bonds.
Yeah, I have the case. I had the paving history. I spent hours trying to, the records kind of vanished after twenty eighteen. It was like nothing. I had to dig, dig, dig and and really.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the budget from twenty twenty just to validate that because that's not my memory.
Okay, certainly, I.
I have all those budgets from past years.
Okay.
Thought I can bring it.
So I can't remember zeroing the paving budget in twenty twenty.
Well, we're looking at it right here in the first column, right? That the right year we're talking about?
Would have been twenty twenty one. The first column was a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, a hundred thousand dollars.
Right now, we have five roads that are beyond. Urgent, they're critical for paving, um surfacing, ditching.
Damn, what five roads are those?
Uh South Mammoth Road from Route one twenty six to Fish Hatchery, so one point three mile stretch.
I don't view that as critical, Mike. I I just don't view this. I look, like, uh, let me make myself clear. I don't doubt. That we could spend six hundred thousand dollars on paving and 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 it would be the right thing to do if I thought we were gonna have it. Um I just think, you know, right now you've got um vehicle fuel at forty five thousand dollars and. There's a likelihood that that's gonna at least double in actually in actual cost, potentially double.
I agree.
Okay, right, so. We we in all good, I in all good conscience, I'm not not willing to ask the voters to. Approve a four hundred thousand dollar uh increase in in paving. Uh in a year when we have absolutely no idea what the school's gonna come through with. What fuel costs are gonna do to blow up our budgets, uh you know, police, public works being the two main drivers of that. Um in in uh two thousand nine, after the the real economic crash in two thousand eight, the the big downturn. We zeroed the paving budget. We we didn't pave anything and um. We didn't wanna do that. It's not what we wanted to do. It's just it was a, it was a fiscal reality that, you know, people couldn't afford. We're gonna have people right now, this very minute, that have to choose between food and fuel to heat their homes. So I I I I'm not saying that you're not proposing what you believe needs to be done in a in a. In a completely good faith manner. And I I don't mean to come back, I'm not trying to say that you're not, believe me. I believe that you're proposing what through your evaluation is a good faith. Effort to convey what you think needs to be done. I think it's it's part of my responsibility as a as a, as a board member to give my opinion on. Whether or not we we should ask people living on a fixed income to to uh. Who are facing real dire circumstances, food's going up, you know, it it's just, it's. If if that's what the board wants to do, I, you know, okay, but I would encourage the people in the town to take a real good look at voting it down. Because essentially that's what this is about. This is what each department had and then the board looks at. What we, what we should do, what would be in the best interest of maintaining infrastructure and and what we should do. Then you guys do that. Then we look at what we think is is in the total picture, gonna be something that the voters would likely accept. And then we try to put out a product that we hope they'll accept. And we've had. Budget lines before that were voted down because they just weren't willing to accept that price. We had to go back and readjust. So, I mean, if that's what. The board wants to do is say, okay, you know, let's put the six hundred thousand out there and if it gets voted down, we'll have to come back and revisit it. Okay, fine. I'm just saying that. As a, as a board member, I I would not be in favor of doing that and as a citizen, I would vote up.
Okay, can we uh, can you, well, can we use the money that's in our uh? Reserve?
You can use the designated fund balance for anything that the voters will let you use.
Right, yes.
So, so i- if it, if it was essential, what, can we hear about the other roads that you had on your list?
Uh Town Farm Road, which goes from Route one twenty six to the Litchfield Line, um over on Tacoma Lakes. That road is severely deteriorated as well.
How long, what's the number of miles?
Uh point seven, three miles. Uh Wilson Pond Road, uh basically from Backstreet to Old Houston Road, uh one point two miles approximate. Um is is. In very bad shape.
I go over that road now, do you get rid of the ice that's stuck to bottom of my car?
Does it because you can't plow it because there's so many divots in it that uh you can't get it down to?
Juggles car and also drops the ice.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Uh Blue Road uh from Main Street to the Norris Hill intersection, that's point eight miles. Um it it needs multiple culverts along with uh resurfacing. Uh and then Norris Hill Road uh from the Blue Road intersection to Academy is point six, seven miles. Uh that's in very rough shape. Uh you know, we have reclaim out there in three of the culverts to try and smooth it out right now. It needs complete ditching, culvering and ultimately resurfacing. Um and the other. I have four more, but I'll just stop at this last one because these these roads I'm naming are the ones that are what I call critical, uh Sanborn Road. Uh the entire length of the road, one point seven five miles. Um we have severe um. Shoulder erosion and the tar cracks. Um and it it just, it gets heavily traveled. South Mammoth Road and San One Road get an amazing amount of traffic, I've noticed and and it's kind of like the South Highway of Monmouth. And uh in Des Moines, um and I don't have the numbers here, but most of these roads I've just mentioned. Um are at the twelve to fourteen year mark since they were last touched on those sections. So there. If we were hopeful to be on a ten year cycle of getting all the roads in town, then they are, they're well overdue. And I have three other roads, um smaller roads, uh that again, they're at like fourteen years, but. I'll just let you chew on those six I mentioned.
So the other thing that you you you're probably gonna have to face is the fact that even if the voters approved, however, we. Found the money, uh six hundred thousand dollars, that that six hundred thousand dollars is is gonna pave about half what you think it's gonna pave.
Due to the increased price. I know, that's the other problem. That's is we. If you, even if I did get, you know, what I asked for, I still wouldn't be able to do all the roads just this year. I do know that hurts. It's. It's gonna be tough for a while.
So, so the other thing to 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 potentially consider is. When when we get to the place where we reduce some bond debt. Holding off whatever we could absolutely hold off until we could look at getting approval to to do dual bond, fix it right. And spend the money that's necessary to fix it right. Um instead of spending a lot of money to Band-Aid something that in another five or six or eight years is gonna have to have the same or more amount of money. Like sandboard should just be rebuilt. I mean, significant, not the whole, you know, road bed taken out, but. The the ditching and then the the proper filling in for the uh for the for the sides and and the culverts. And then and then resurfacing. That's really what should be done, but that's not something we can afford to do out of the general appropriation. I mean, just. That's my view.
Like, like you said, and I'll, you know, repeat, I'm not doing my job if I don't present it.
Exactly, a hundred, I'm absolutely not against you presenting it. Just giving you my outlook on it.
So um so I look at the, what we see here is a three year history of our paving budget. And I'm pretty sure it was twenty twenty one when uh Packard and Gilman was done. Is that, is that correct? Twenty twenty one?
I had it as twenty twenty, but that could be a year off.
Depends on what time in twenty twenty, I mean, the fiscal year runs.
The money was, the bond was, the work was actually. Completed in a different fiscal year than the the bond was uh approved. And the money was actually spent in a different fiscal year from the bond was was approved. So. It it's, it kind of bleeds in from one fiscal year to another.
Sure. So at that point, when 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 Packard and Gilman were finished. Um is it, is it correct that I'm remembering that? That made our total number of paved roads, total number of miles, about forty six miles, forty eight miles, something like that?
We're actually at uh like fifty nine miles of paved roads.
Yeah, fifty nine miles.
We were at fifty six.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, fifty six miles. And so if if our goal, if the standard is. That we wanna see every road paved every ten years.
Six miles a year.
Then we should be doing between five and six miles a year.
Which is well over a million dollars.
Yes, especially with the.
Well, we then, then we need to go to the voters and say, do you want us to pave every ten years or do you want us to? Uh, do something less and not meet the standard? Because, I mean, I, the number one problem that uh, the voters pointed out to us the last time we did a survey. Was that we ought to be spending money on maintaining the roads that we have, not building new roads. I mean, that was the number one thing on the survey was, dude, you know, fix what you got. Why are we? Why are we expanding? And I look at, I look at, you know, the twenty twenty-one budget. And we spent a hundred thousand dollars.
That's not fully spent yet. The uh. Pine Hill and Warren Road. Uh, that's in the final coat, so that that money will be spent.
Sure. No, that's actually from the twenty twenty, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Correct. The Pine Hill Road is the two hundred thousand dollars. That's this year, this fiscal year, this fiscal year's budget is two hundred thousand dollars.
Yep, Pine Hill and Warren are gonna be about one eighty-two.
Okay.
And then the rest of that will be um, gravel.
Okay, so so uh, if memory serves, when we allocated two hundred thousand dollars last year. Or uh, uh, let me, let me say it again, two hundred thousand dollars in this fiscal year. We paved three miles. I was here when we approved it.
Yeah.
We paid three miles. If we're paving three miles on a fifty-six mile network, we're on a. About, uh, we're gonna pave it once every twenty years. I mean, come on, this is deferred maintenance. If we defer the maintenance even more. The roads are gonna fall apart, and even the brand new ones, we're never gonna be able to keep up with. And and. I mean, I hear Doug when he says. Well, what about the un, uh, the uh? The reserve fund, the uh, what are we calling it? Undesignated fund balance. You know, our auditor has said to us, you don't need to have twenty percent undesignated fund balance. So it's a savings bank essentially for uncertain times. I completely understand, like a couple of years ago, the beginning of the pandemic. I was here before the board saying, hey, you might wanna be careful. Right? And the undesignated fund balance. Went from, you know, fifteen percent to twenty percent. And so. Our our accountants, our our auditors are saying, look, you don't need. So much. Cash in the bank. Because we're through the pandemic. Now, I, you know, Harold, I hear you in terms of. Of, you know, uncertain times, and we've got some inflation issues and. A lot of, you know, a lot of moving parts today. But the one thing that's not gonna move is like how quickly these roads are gonna fall apart if you pave them once every twenty years. I mean, if that's the plan. You're not saving money. You're causing people to spend money maintaining their cars. Right? The suspension system in their cars are gonna break. Or the roads won't get paved as cleanly as they could. I mean, already people are complaining about why the town of Wales has a much better paving job or a a plowing job than the town of Monmouth. Like, it's night and day. Well, part of it is because the road condition, like, there's so many dips in the roads in Monmouth. You can't get them clean.
They also have so happy. Area too, right?
Well, it's a smaller town, sure. Sure, and they do a different process, right? They do the pre-treatment process. They don't, they don't do sand and salt. Yeah, so uh. I mean, it seems to me like. There's gotta be, something's gotta give here. We don't need to have. Uh, an undesignated fund balance at at twenty percent when our, when our accountant, our our auditors are saying. You know, what's reasonable is.
Twenty twenty audit, and we don't have the twenty-one yet. So I I expect it could be. Could be twenty, yeah, maybe a little over.
So why not? Why not bring our undesignated fund balance down to a point where. Our auditors are saying that's reasonable. And infuse some money into the paving, which ultimately is where it came from, right? I mean, we were saving up all the money from. And and putting it into the undesignated fund balance by not paving.
Well, that's, that's not true, what we.
Well, it's right here.
No, you can't do that, Kent. That's not how the undesignated fund balance works. Um, so the undesignated fund balance, you're allowed to to uh, appropriate a certain number of mills over the. Expenditures that you propose to designate that money to go into the undead designated fund balance. Everything that's appropriated, every line that's appropriated, if you don't spend it, has to be rolled over because it can't go into the undesigned front balance.
All of the money, the the undesignated fund balance is made up of of basically two components. It's it's what Harold said is the overlay, which. Is technically uh, used for property tax abatements, even though that's not what it originally was. It's supposed to be like your fudge factor on your on your budget. The remaining of the undesignated fund balances, any any money. That isn't spent in a department budget at the end of the year falls into the undesignated fund balance. So if we were really. If as department heads or account manager, we were really fiscally tight and and we were able to really hold the line, you could build your fund balance very quickly over a period of years. If you're not spending all the money that was appropriated.
But you can only spend that money on that line, if I understand it correctly.
With the way that um. The line items aren't important. What's important is the articles. That are approved.
Right, so public work. So if we said we we appropriate a total amount of the public works, and we don't spend that money in public works, that. It has to go into the undesigned of native fund balance, but it can only be spent.
In public works.
In public works.
That is correct.
Which is what I was trying to push across to 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 Kent. It's it's, it's not just a slush fund to spend someplace else.
Right, no, no. And only the town meeting is the one that can authorize money coming out of the fund balance. I can't do that, and you can't do that. It has to be an article that says, do you want to remove X from the fund balance to use for whatever purpose?
Regardless of the accounting procedure. It seems to me that when you defer maintenance and. If we spent. Two hundred thousand dollars and paid three miles in twenty twenty-two, which is, which is what I'm reading on this chart. And then the previous year, we only spent a hundred thousand dollars, half as much. Presumably, we we paved about one point five miles. We are deferring maintenance. It's not, it should be no surprise that the number one issue for townspeople is road maintenance. That's the number one complaint. Um, I, it's time to. It's time to get caught up. And if we can fund that by reducing our undesignated fund balance. To the level that our auditors have suggested. As reasonable for municipality of our size, and at the same time solve some of these problems with road maintenance. Then I would be in favor of that.
I'll just add that I am. Where road maintenance went off the rails a little bit from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. I am using all the historical data I have and. Filing an an urgent plan with like a a five year window. And then I'm adding in obviously Packard and Gilman now. And the other ones, I'm working on a ten year plan. Of of a new schedule of roads. Basically, uh, we had, you know, forever, we had consistency with uh, previous directors. They just had a schedule and and it was there, and they just kept going, and kind of things were off the rails, and then we've added two new paved roads. So I'm. Reprioritizing the roads, like I say, for a five year. To get the the urgent ones dealt with. And the ones that aren't urgent this year will be urgent next year and the year after. Uh, and then getting all the roads on a new schedule going out to twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. To and to try and. Have it be a consistent. Uh, mileage every year. Um, so that the budget doesn't have to go up and down. Obviously, the economy does, so that changes everything. But just so you know, I I am working on it, looking, looking far ahead. To try and not have the roller coaster, uh, to get get through this period and and smooth out.
Historically, her, and I, and I'm sure Harold can. Herb was always stuck on seven um, years. Uh, every seven years he would want a road. Repaved.
Right, and then uh, there was, there was one point, and again, this was back when money was really tight, where he said, well, you know what, I I think I can, I can uh. Squirt the cracks, you know, do that. Right, uh, we call them putting road snakes down and uh. And make the roads last a little bit longer, which worked really well with Ridge Road, but they really did extend the life of that road by by filling the cracks. Um, it's not a. Uh, anywhere near the same as repaving or resurfacing, but it 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 can help keep. The road from deteriorating further by keeping water from getting in there and blowing it out and stuff, but um, so, yeah, I mean, Herb. Like you say, it was always seven or eight years was his target, and and there were a lot of years when we were able to get pretty close to that. Um, but. And again, I, like I stated. Before, if if the board decides that they wanna put forward this. Public Works budget at a fifty-nine percent increase over last year, and they wanna ask the voters to approve. Whatever amount of money they wanna ask them to approve to come out of the undesigned fund balance, then okay. Um, just be prepared if that doesn't pass. That's all I'm saying. Cause I I personally believe that that. Eighteen or twenty percent is gonna be uh. Um, is gonna shrink severely um, over the next year or two or three. Um, and I I would, I would urge. That we do something uh, with regard to uh, bringing the fuel budget line back up. I mean, bringing it up to where it's a more realistic figure. So if you took the fuel line and and said, instead of forty-five, it's gonna be ninety. I'm good with that, because that's probably what it's gonna be.
Yeah, I didn't have a figure because the, I believe it's the co-op we're a part of, hasn't set our figures.
Or they can't.
Yeah, and now, so uh. And I know the reason why that line is so underspent at this point is that the school is not fueling us right now.
Right, well, then you haven't got a delivery probably this week.
Yeah, I get diesel every, well, the stores we've had, I'm getting it every other week.
So diesel was is right at five bucks a gallon.
Yeah.
I got heated up today, and it was almost five fifty.
Yeah, it's gonna be, they're saying it's gonna be six by eight.
Why is the school not fueling with it?
I can only comment to to secondhand information uh, as to why I I have uh. I have the story, but I I don't think it's my story to share.
Just so you know, I'm, I met with the superintendent this morning, and it was, it was the number one ask of their business office of whether they could come back and. Put there, because it's, they're having to drive basically out of town to do it.
Yeah, exactly. And I was approached by somebody that, you know, drives the bus and said, why is this happening? You know, and I said, all I know is what I heard, but. You know.
I don't mean to bring it to you prematurely, because I haven't talked to Dan, and I didn't, I didn't know if he knew why we stopped, or if we don't have the capacity or what, so I didn't really want, I wasn't gonna. Mention it, but since it came up.
It wasn't just Dan Roy. I mean, it wasn't just the fire department that was. Way underpaying for for their. Fuel, but uh, I guess they were missing some. From my uh, school, what the school was using, so I. And Linda said, okay, we're not.
I mean, before we move on, I wanna make it clear, I do not disagree with Kent's logic. I don't. I I I agree with his logic. I just don't think that we have the, we should be spending that right now. But I I do not disagree with his philosophy and his logic. I just think it's not the right time to be asking that. But again, that's up to the voters. I mean, if we wanna say, if we wanna let that question be asked, okay, we just have to be prepared for them to say no.
And and that's how I feel about it too, is not that it doesn't need to be done. I'm fully aware of it. I'm. Not only driving Monmouth, but drive all around the state, and, you know, roads are an issue. It's not just in our town, it's in every town. But I don't think that this year is the year to be thinking that we're going to be. Getting a good deal on petroleum products.
Now, I did speak to the baby company uh, earlier this week, and they're talking prices uh, between ninety and ninety-three dollars a ton.
Oh, it it's gonna be insane, and it's not.
That's that. Beginning of the week, you know, the they'd had a meeting Friday morning, so I'm sure this Friday that that number will be. Up in the attic.
Yeah.
So it may be, I mean, just, I don't wanna shoot myself in the foot, but I mean, the price may go so so sky high, you can't, you can't do it.
Exactly.
Period.
So and and so just, just to, I guess, finalize my thoughts on this, I I again, I agree with Ken's logic. I don't dispute it at all. Um, and I would be in favor if we get through this coming fiscal year, we get to this point next year, whether I'm on the board or somebody else is, whatever. If I'm still on the board then. Um, and we have a twenty percent undesigned fund balance, and we've made it through the next fiscal year, I would be in favor of that ask. Or maybe even more of an ask, because we'd really be able to have a really, I think, solid idea of where the economy is is. And hopefully the. Upsets in Asia, in Europe, you know, Eastern Europe are, you know, settled and and whatever, whatever. I just think we'd be in a better spot.
I can't take this.
I thi- I think, in a lot of ways, that's just being a realist.
Yeah. I mean, I. We always thought that something else, things would get better after the pandemic's over, but then it's not about the pandemic, it's about. What, what has come out of that between inflation and then the upsets in Eastern Europe. So I I I. I guess the same thing. People are really taking it on the chin right now, so to ask for this amount of money. For me, it's a hard, hard pill to swallow, even though we know it needs to be done, but we need to come to some. Middle ground on it, to get. The maintenance on the, the serious. One, and then make a plan, you know, hoping that. We can tackle the rest. If the market comes down, which, I mean, obviously it wouldn't, because. Where we were in nineteen seventy, burning seven cords of wood and not using oil, things came down. That's how I look at things, back from when I was a kid to where we were, to where it was and where it is.
I remember, I remember the oil embargo and Jimmy Carter, that's where we are.
Put another sweater on.
We are pretty much getting there.
Put another sweater on, so. That's what the word was at our house.
Are you ready for the transfer station?
I am, yes, I was, I had, that was the last.
I had one question, but it's not about paving. Um, other services, um. It wrote, it's two seventy roadside mowing and nuisance traffic. So. So essentially, the budget was zero, which I don't know how Curtis Fox got paid, not Curtis, Paul Fox got paid. But I would assume it would have been out of that line. But maybe that was the year he stopped doing it. After he rolled his tractor over.
No, he, um, this is the thing, died and then.
No.
No road, he.
He, he, he had a cutter bar on his, on his, yeah, on the side of the road. So it was zero, it's a cutter. And um. So it was zero, so I'm not sure when Paul start uh, doing that.
What's the line number one?
Two seventy. But then, but we expended some money, and then we had it at. Fifty-five for this year, but I didn't think any roadside mowing happened. Yes, it did. But who was, I don't know who did it.
It was, I unfortunately, it was probably last summer, and I I haven't. I don't know.
I know Packard was done, the sides of Packard was done.
Yeah, this.
They cut it and the the branches stay on the road until they plow.
But it wasn't, but it was, yeah, but I I think that somebody was out with a weed whacker doing it. I don't think that we had a. Somebody mowing the side of the road.
We did, we definitely did, because I talked to Keith about it. I wanted uh. I wanted Keith to hire Andy Baker.
Yeah, but Andy didn't do it.
Right.
Andy didn't do it.
Because he hired somebody else, but. And I don't remember who it was.
No, I don't, I don't either, but I know some of it.
Somebody did, okay, so. So I guess I was just trying to figure out how we went from zero to fifty-five to. We're doing fifty-five again, and whether that is getting.
I can't explain the zero to fifty-five as before my time, but I can tell you that I would, the road sides are. In desperate need of mowing and brushing, cutting. And so I I plan to spend every penny of that. You'll prove it.
Sure, for safety, for safety, for everything.
Exactly.
Yeah, for drainage, safety, you name it. We have some.
So that goes out to Ben? Is that how that works, or what's the story with that?
Well, we don't have a contractor that we've got a signed contract with. Yeah, I assume I would just take names and book for people willing, and then. Vet them and see what what the consensus is.
That they have the equipment capable of doing it. I think that's always an interesting question.
So that brings me to my, my question, is not in this budget, but at some future time, would you consider looking at a piece of equipment? Be able to do that with, and then staffing that piece of equipment, you know, somebody that already works for. To be able to do that with and then staffing that piece of equipment, you know, somebody that already works for the public works to actually do that function.
I I, yes, I actually have pictures of the piece of equipment and and step that pricing and uh. Uh held off for this year at the moment, but yes, uh, yes. There's a lot in this one, so. The first one is uh line zero one one six wages part-time. I'm basically asking for an additional part-time employee for the transfer station. What I'm seeing when I'm out there, especially on the weekends and. Is that uh when it gets busy, it gets very busy. The the amount of people coming in and using the the transfer station, it's. At times extremely hectic area, and once you get a couple of the gay attendants um. Assisting people with proper dumping, uh taking payment for them on other things. A lot of people don't wanna wait, be patient, and they just dump where they think they should uh. Lots of times that stuff, this stuff that needs to be paid for, um it's stuff that's dumped in the wrong area. Which is uh very costly for the town and time-consuming for the attendance to have to move it to the appropriate area. They're basically over, they're at the max level for the employees we have, the amount of volume coming in, they're at the max. And uh we could really use an additional person. Which would put us at four attendants. And then, you know, if there is, uh if and if when there are um people that take vacation time or their sick time. Put them still at a staff level of three, which could be handled instead of currently a staff level of two. Or uh myself or somebody going out and covering for additional land power. I envision this person, this additional person also uh put us in the direction of having a gate attendant. Somebody that can check the permits right in, can uh issue permits if that person needs one. And so they don't have to try and get to the town office, it's they're there, they're valid, they can take care of it. They're gonna direct them to the proper area, uh they can radio to the other attendants, say, hey, this blue car is coming, they have demo and they can, it'd be. Much more efficient, a lot less stressful for the employees and the citizens using the facility. Cuz there's some of the biggest issues is 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 from the citizens is that they. They don't know where to go, that frustrates them, they come in frustrated and just having an additional person. Uh would really be able to to help guide them, ease it, make it easier for everybody involved. And uh even though it's an ex- it's an expense, I think it's gonna be a beneficial expense for the overall operation of the facility. So that's my biggest there is I do wanna add an employee. They would be a part-time employee. But I think it's it's where the next step for the transfer station to go.
How many hours?
Be twenty-four in the winter and thirty-two in the summer. Yeah, technically.
Yep, but it is full-time at the town office, it's thirty.
I know, but the only full-timer I have at the transfer station is the transfer station manager. The other two that work thirty-two in the summer, because I only work thirty-two in the summer, I believe that's how they classify it, part-time. But don't quote me, that's that's his answer.
It averages below the amount would be my guess, I think. I I I don't know, but I I I have to look into it, but I.
My assumption on how that's classified.
One thousand eighty hours.
Yeah, something like, yeah.
Right, cuz that's twenty hours a week. Oh, two oh one advertising, I I bumped it up to two hundred because we. Have spent a hundred and eighty this year and the budget line was one fifty. Uh just, I'm assuming, you know, the rising cost of printed materials, so it's the pamphlets or that the the permits that we hand out. I just added fifty to it, so it wouldn't be overspent on that assumption. One of the hard ones is oh two oh eight demolition removal. I bumped that line to seventy thousand. Demo is, the volume is skyrocketing. It has skyrocketed. It's most likely due to COVID, the pandemic, people are home, they're cleaning out. Um, and boy, are they cleaning out. Along with that, um the cost to remove the demo uh has increased tremendously and. All the haulers, uh Grimls, Blue Rock, um have added fuel surcharges this year in the middle of the budget year. And that's not gonna go away. So. The other issues you're looking at is is sheet rock and shingles piles fall into this uh and. They were not been removed for an extended period at this point, two plus years. I took a small bite out of each pile last fall, but it it immediately filled back up. So the piles need to come down to a manageable size. I'm not looking to have bare ground there, but. It's, they just haven't been done, haven't been done. And they're they're at a point that they're, you can see them, they're huge and they just.
Does any of us not go to a landfill?
I'm I'm not sure on that. I'm not sure. I know. The sheet rock went someplace in Auburn. I'm not sure where the shingles went.
Don't they make like a reclaim out of. Singles, like grind them up and mix them in with. Yeah, it's like a substitute.
We'll just use the shingles on the road.
Reclaim.
Seven, seven, seven nails in a week.
The the actual demo in the demo hopper, that goes to a landfill, right?
That, yeah, that goes to actually Grimls halls at out of Topson, that goes to their facility, where I believe they put it into a huge sorting machine and sort the materials out. I I, don't quote me, I believe they have one of those grinding machines that eats everything and then sorts it. But that goes, that goes to Grimls. Sheet rock and shingles go to different facilities, all by different contractors.
Okay, I'm not disagreeing with your. Ask, I think it's very reasonable to, I think the costs are gonna be at least that.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, the the fuel surcharges were added late fall and and uh. Then another holler just had to increase and and they sent me an email that their fuel cost went from four oh nine. Last week to five ten this week a gallon, so I expect the surcharge is gonna increase proportionally.
And and what however they're just, if they're doing anything other than bringing it to a landfill and their operating cost for electricity for the equipment that they're operating. Are gonna go up and so everything's gonna go up.
Right, yeah, I'm tipping fees, I've I left that line at the same amount, but I imagine our tipping fees are eco-main and for. What's the place in Auburn? I can't come up with the name off the top of my head at the moment. I imagine the tipping fees are gonna go up and that that is.
So I I would again suggest that you increase that line to to a a realistic. Educated guess of what the tipping, like you could, there's no harm in calling them and saying. What do you envision your tipping fees being next year at this time? And then if they tell you that they don't foresee an increase, then you buy them a cake and some some ice cream. But if they say, you know, we're we're looking at because of all the different increase in cost with electricity and fuel, we're looking at. So many dollars a ton increase possibility, then you could, then I would suggest you put that in the budget.
Um, let's see, uh oh two two zero grounds maintenance. Uh it went from one tw- uh it was, it was zero previously, uh I put two fifty. Besser parking lot striping, uh sign up, keep, I need some new letters for the sign up by the road. And uh just covering the cost of mulch and stuff for the area that we. Pretty up for it to look nicer than it, you know, does. One line that went down, oh two four two repair maintenance to the building. That number last year, ten thousand, was for the replacement of the overhead door um on the building that covers the trash compactor trailer. Uh that door has not been installed yet, it's still on order. But um I was able to, I dropped the line back down to five thousand. My reason for not going down to the previous numbers is that the building, uh it needs some repair work, the gutters are no longer functioning as a gutter. Uh they need to be uh repositioned, reangled. We need some electrical work in the building, um and we also need some bathroom repair. So that's why I put that at five thousand. Uh oh two four four repair maintenance of equipment, the compactor trailers, um I've increased it from fifteen to twenty. Five thousand increase, you'll see that I haven't expended much this year. But it's it's there, it's it's piling up in my yard right now and I imagine in the next two months I will end up spending close to that. Budget appropriation, um the trailers are aging, the two of them are, one's a ninety-seven, one's a ninety-eight. And those trailers are, there are need of repairs to be reliable spares and unfortunately due to a newer trailer uh having issues, I've had to. Put one into service and its age is showing itself as it's being put into service and it's it's nickel and dime in me right now. Um, but I am forced to use it, so. I'll be honest with you, I'll probably come to you next year looking for another compactor trailer replacement.
So you, I'm thinking that you're, what you're talking about is maybe some major hydraulic repair work on. On one or two of the older trailers, uh. Controls the ram, the whole, the pump, the whole deal.
Yep, and then and uh just due to the stress they're put under compacting, we got some framework and side reinforcement. Uh and the one that's sitting in my yard right now, um has a fueling issue that's being traced to injectors. We cannot get new injectors anymore, so they have to be rebuilt. It's just the nature of the beast.
What's that got for power?
That one has a Ford diesel in it, it's in my yard right now.
Okay, so the power stroke?
No, it's a four-cylinder industrial. Different one, yeah. Uh oh two six two tire removal, uh I bumped that up to thousand to four. Well, I discovered in the fall that tire removal, along with like sheet rock and shingles, hadn't been done for two plus years. I removed eighteen tons of tires in the fall of twenty-one, there's still approximately twelve tons there to be removed after that. The budget line did not have enough funds available to remove the remaining twelve tons and the company didn't wanna, didn't wanna. Come down for less than ten tons, so it, they had to sit. Tire collection rooms remained high through the winter, surprisingly, uh I'm not gonna assume you do the COVID, uh and the pile is back almost up to the fall twenty-one level. Uh and I expect tire removal prices to increase as all other removal costs have, so I'm hoping four thousand dollars will put. A serious debt, that pile, uh get it to a manageable level. That's the reason for the increase there. Uh oh two seven four wood removal, um or so-called dirty wood pile removal. They did a removal of that pile in the summer twenty-one before I started. That removal overspent the budget by almost thirty-five hundred dollars, so I was unable to do anything else with that pile since for the rest of the budget year. Again, skyrocketing volume, most likely due to COVID and skyrocketing removal prices. Uh and that wood pile is now double the size of the pile in twenty twenty-one for the removal. So to shrink that pile or to get rid of that pile, which is the one that the environmental people get most upset with. Uh is gonna be very costly.
Why do they get upset about it?
It's all mixtures type of wood, it's not pressure treated, pressure treated goes in the dental bin, it's everything else, it's paint, it's varnish, it's.
And they don't like it hanging around.
Yeah, it's. Dirty wood, that's actually labeled the signs, I I couldn't make this up, it's actually labeled dirty wood. So it's uh, it's it's it's. You know, the nickname out there right now is Mount Monmouth, so.
It had to be uh turned into biomass because of the. Paint and stuff like that, do you allow it to be, so that's the difference. It it can, yeah, they can, they can't use it to burn, they can use it for some other things or they they can. Put it in a landfill, but.
I'm told that's what they do, they grind it, it goes to a landfill.
What they use it is, landfills have to have material like that to seal it every day when they. Put, so they they use that kind of material and other materials that are um. Theoretically impervious surface, form impervious surfaces and they line the landfill with those materials. That, a lot of that comes from the recycling place in Lewiston or from Grimls, so whatever, that goes up to the landfill. Old Town and it, they use it for we for lining. But but there's no recovery, there's no cost recovery, like you you chip clean wood, you get a, the company that does it gets a cost recovery on that.
Right, my other pile out back, the clean wood pile, you know, I actually make money on that pile, you know, to.
Right, cuz it goes to biomass.
The line oh three four seven sanitation supplies, the the portable toilet we have in place, the contract. Rental went up twenty dollars a month, that's that increase. Uh and when I stayed on um for Vegas repairs, I stayed bathroom repair. There is uh a toilet there that has electricity and heat, I guess it's an old compost burning toilet. And they're, they're presently using a porta potty, so when it's. Zero out there and windy there, I have a plastic porta potty, so I'd really. In good conscience, like to get the heated lit bathroom repaired for them, cuz I think it's the least we can do for them standing outside all day long in the winter.
No disagreement there.
Oh three five one pest control.
Can we, can we get rid of the porta potty?
Uh that would be my plan, is if I can get the uh toilet repaired and functioning, that the porta potty rental would go away. Uh pest control contract, uh rodent control, that one, that contract went up, which is the reason for the increase. Uh seventy-one forty monthly now to help control the uh rat, nice population out there. And then uh the last increase is oh three five four, which is uh wearing apparel that. If uh we added additional employee, that is the uh clothing uh supply allowance line for them if they were added. That's that's what I have for transfer station.
I know this is the budget of expenditures, but I know we talked at one point about um what whales pays us and we were gonna look into. You know, what whales pays us, cuz if our fees are going up, adjusting how whales compensate.
Provided me with a revenue sheet, which I believe I put my hands on right now.
Well, we'll we'll cover off on that when we do the revenue side, so we'll, when we do the revenue side, we match it up against the expenditure side and see. See what.
It's only my second time doing this, I always forget those things.
So I I don't at all disagree with anything transfer station wise there, but I do think we need to look at. On the revenue side, what we might do for adjustments there to to try to offset as much of that as we can. We can't put it all there, we can't ask whales to pay the whole thing, but but they should pay it proportionally.
From my personal viewpoint, or the manager, the director of the transfer station viewpoint, I really, I know our fee schedule. For stuff that we do charge residents for is somewhat outdated, but at the same time, they're already paying for the transfer station. I I have a real hard time going crazy on a fee schedule increase, cuz they're already paying it out of their taxes.
I agree a hundred percent.
And we're not inviting uh commercial haulers in, we're just covering our Monmouth and whales residents.
That's always a difficult balance, cuz if you charge people what it costs to get rid of a tire, they end up in the woods.
That's right.
What do you want them to do?
Well, and and to Dan's point, we are charging them in the tax bill to to do that, so yeah, I I hundred percent agree. I I have no problem with doing away with it altogether, it's just putting it in the tax bill. Um, because that is a sore spot for folks, well, I'm paying taxes to operate this, now you're charging me to. To to dump this other thing. I'm not sure that that's the right way to go, because then people might, you know, take advantage of that if they didn't have to have to pay something. I just agree that we shouldn't look at raising.
Yeah, not at this time.
Just one, one question, uh since we started the process like three months ago of being more diligent and checking people's permits and stuff. Um, have you seen any impact on the, you know, year-on-year flow of.
We. Volume is still high, but. Right now, this time of year is comparable for this time of year. What what the last, historically, what the last couple of years have been. I will be getting better at providing you with figures of how many people are visiting the transfer station. Uh but one thing, it just dawned on me recently, and maybe even it was last weekend, week in fours. Uh we have one commercial hauler that comes in, John Cushman, he hauls only Monmouth and Wales residents trash. And I saw him there and I, I saw him unload in his truck and I I said to the, one of the attendants, I said, do we count him as one vehicle? Or how many customers he's carrying? And they're like, we count him as one vehicle. I said, okay. And so I went to John, I said, hey, what's your approximate customer load? And he said, two hundred and twenty customers a week on average, so. Now I'm saying. Just at the end of the week, add two twenty to whatever your count is, cuz John is bringing in two hundred and twenty residents, recycle trash. So those numbers are gonna inflate, but it's 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 a number that's always been there, it's just gonna be more accurate representation.
How do we know that all the customers he's servicing are Monmouth Wales residents?
Yeah, it's on his honor, he signed his, signed his license that states that's where he's hauling from.
Okay.
I have to take it at that.
He's at his limit with two hundred and twenty.
Wait, I I just, you know, I didn't know if twenty of them were these field residents or. Okay, all right, I trust you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the dialogue.
So the uh, the streetlights, I didn't change much to that, cuz the 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 bills we're getting right now are reflective of what we've been paying. On those LEDs. And if, I don't know where, I apologize, I don't know where that thirty-one thousand nine hundred number came from on the on the hydrants, cuz it's not. It's not attached to last year's reality, but I got the letter. From them to, from them today, so that new scratched-out number is is what they're saying we're gonna pay next year.
That's the water association. And that's a, what, of just a certain, certain amount per hydrant?
Yeah, I can, I can read it, fire protection fees, we've had them on with twenty twenty-two and fifty-eight thousand four oh two. That amount represents thirty percent of our twenty twenty-one gross water service revenues, which totaled one hundred and ninety-four, six ninety-four.
So the total number is really sixty-one thousand nine hundred and two dollars. Well, you you crossed out the thirty-one thousand, may it fifty-eight.
Right.
So that plus thirteen-five is not forty-five-four.
Right, 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 total line, yeah.
So the total for that utilities is sixty-one thousand nine oh two. If my math is accurate. Not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying it's what it is.
Now it should be seventy-one.
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 Yeah, seventy-one, right, seventy-one, thank you. I didn't do the physical math. My head wasn't, didn't, my head didn't carry the one over. No, my head didn't carry the one over.
Are seventy-two thousand dollars. This total utility budget.
This is fifty-eight four oh two. I had to cheat off of Harold.
Oh yeah, cuz you brought it wrong, right? It wasn't correct, the ones I handed out for the people that liked the paper, I fixed it for them, sorry.
You sound like Laurie Gifford now. She said she made it through math class because she sat next to me. Well, you weren't teaching that class, Doug, Dave Heckman was. I know that other people. I've heard. She didn't cheat, she didn't cheat on tests, she she just watched my homework.
Was this Doug's class? Dave Heckman's class.
But there were other people who I know here.
Unnamed student, for example. I'm having a hard time remembering. By the way, I got a meeting with Dave Heckman, I'm gonna tell him.
You know, and and she'd be the first, she says that all the time and it's like, that's not true, Lori, cuz Lori's smart. But uh also one of my truest friends in school.
So we're on to. The warrant, okay. Blue work, Blue Rock Earthworks, solid waste trip to two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, privacy watershed district third assessment sixteen thousand two hundred. Fourteen dollars, DJ's Municipal Supply Inc., pallet patch, robe units, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Eco-main cycling seventeen sixty-five, GDI Services Inc. Sanitorial Services for the town buildings, three thousand fifty dollars. Grimble Industries, bulk waste demo, one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Hub International, Norton Volunteer Fire Accident Policy, one thousand four hundred and two. Lower Shell Consulting Economic Development, thirteen hundred, main municipal employees, health trust, employee insurance, sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Main Waste to Energy, one thousand eight hundred and six. Minutemen Security Technologies, fire, fire inspections, one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight. New England Salt Company, salt, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Paul Designs Project, the architect of the academy project, two thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Regional School Unit Number Two, School Appropriation, four hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Treasure Estate Domain for Motor Vehicles is two thousand ten and five thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. They're aiming for IFW, five thousand one hundred and seventy-six. And US Bank Corporate Trust, um Sabon Bank Loan for the Packard Gilman, it's an interest only payment of six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number seventeen.
Those motion by Ken, second by Chris to approve warrant number seventeen, all those in favor. Thank you.
Make a motion, we adjourn.